Mayor.
I'm about to say I missed the memo, but everybody can read it.
But she didn't want the memo.
It wasn't that, we just started our Christmas, that's all.
We got two more left.
So, what had happened was you missed a red or either the brown because they all coordinated on that. Man, council, we outvoted. We outvoted on this thing.
Some of the eligible activities for the use of CDBG funds include: One, infrastructure, roads, curves, sidewalks, ADA ramp, ramps, etc. Two, public facilities. Three, parks and recreation. Four, public service programs. Five, demolition. Six, acquisition of property. Seven, removal of architectural barriers. Eight.
You ready? Um, down the clerk, you have your. Down the clerk.
Oh, that clock is fast.
You have your, um, recorder, you're good. Your recorder.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, where's Ken?
He said he'd be right here.
I forgot about Ken.
I'm settled.
You settled?
Wouldn't have been settled if I didn't.
I understand. This is all my shit. Good evening, we now call this city council meeting to order. We ask that if you have a cellphone, that you be so kind at this time to put it on silent, mute, or off. It would be greatly appreciated. We're gonna be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice, through whom authorities rightly administer laws enacted and judgment decreed. Assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
Code enforcement. Nine, housing rehabilitation. Ten, economic development. Eleven, administration and planning expenses. Activities must meet one of the three HUD national objectives, which are: One, must direct.
Before we go through the roll call, we're gonna ask if you're going to address council, if you'd be so kind as to sign in at the sign-in desk or at the podium here. We ask that you place your name and your address, your name and your address, so that you might be able to address council. Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
There.
Morgan.
Present.
West.
Present.
Roots.
Present.
Mayor Kirkland.
Present. Move for the approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. At this time, we open up the microphone for public comments on action items only. Action items only. Hearing and seeing, um, Madam Clerk.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Paul Brandon, one oh five Thurlow Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Number two, Daniel Diggins, one zero zero seven McDowell Avenue, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. And number three, Angela Wallace, sixty-sixth East Twenty-Fourth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works,
we benefit low, moderate income persons as defined by HUD or benefit an area of the city in which at least fifty-one percent of the population is low or moderate income. Number two, prevent or eliminate slumming white. Number three, meet an urgent need to address a situation such as flooding.
A building hole. Block of McDowell Avenue and in a unit block of East Twenty-Fourth Street in the city of Chester.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the city of Chester hired Thelma Evans for the full-time residential housing inspector position. License and inspection department effective September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, for thirty-seven point five hours per week with no benefits and a sixty-day probationary period. And whereas said employment was contingent upon said individual obtaining the required certification for the position within ninety days from the date of hire. And whereas the city is required by law to offer said employee medical benefits after sixty consecutive days of employment, which was completed on November tenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas there has been a request to extend said individual's certification.
Fire, etc.
For an additional sixty day period.
Eligible activities for the use of home funds.
Therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve.
One, homeownership assistance, which includes a down payment or closing cost. Two, housing rehabilitation for rental or sale. Three, new construction of affordable housing. The application package includes technical bulletins that give a more detailed explanation of the allowable use of funds. The package also includes the most.
Said employee will no longer be eligible for the position and will be subject to termination from said position.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Jiquan Wesley to the position of Temporary Heavy Equipment Operator, Department of Public Works, effective December fifth, twenty twenty-two, with no benefits for no more than forty hours per week or until such time as the position is permanently filled.
So moved.
Um, I'm hesitant because it says no benefits. The employee, I believe currently has benefits. Currently, he's currently an employee here, he does have benefits. Um, he's temporarily filling in the position. So I'm not sure how we need to correct it necessarily, but he has currently has benefits.
So I would delete the portion that says with no benefits.
I second with the changes.
Current income limits based on household size.
Just, he does have benefits.
The hearing is now open for public comment. Anybody? Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint Eartha Banks as a member of the Chester City Planning Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint Patricia Lewis West as a member of the City of Chester zoning hearing board, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint Shaquan Davis as a member of the City of Chester zoning hearing board, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that in accordance with recommendations of the Chester City Planning Commission, dated November ninth, twenty twenty-two, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, it does hereby grant final approval to Jorge A. Garcia to reverse subdivide two lots into one at twenty-seven twelve through twenty-seven fourteen Swarth Street as shown on a plan prepared by Catania Engineering Associates Incorporated, five twenty West McDay Boulevard, Millmott Park, PA, one nine zero three three, dated September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the project for city of Chester Municipal Building Roof Replacement Option Two, Resolution one forty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, was awarded to S.J. Thomas, one forty Bartram Avenue, Lansdowne, PA, one nine zero five zero, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Excellent.
Four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents by Chester City Council on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas responses for the project were received through Keystone Purchasing Network, known as KPN, and the city complied with all KPN bidding requirements. And whereas the project is funded through American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve change order number one to the sub-recipient agreement for the use of American Rescue Plan Act between the city of Chester and S.J. Thomas Company Incorporated for additional caulking and resetting of metal panel on building decay for the city of Chester Municipal Building Roof Replacement Option Two project, thereby increasing the agreement price by two thousand nineteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. Further, that all work performed pursuant to change order number one shall be completed in accordance with the specifications and to the satisfaction of city and its engineer. Even further, all the work listed on change order number one will be funded through ARPA Project eleven.
So moved.
I second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that the contract for Memorial Park Pool Upgrades Phase Two be and is hereby awarded to S.J. Thomas, one forty Bartram Avenue, Lansdowne, PA, one nine zero five zero, for which responses were received through Keystone Purchasing Network, which is known as KPN, any amount of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. Further, the city has complied with all KPN bidding requirements. Further, that the solicitor's office shall review and approve the contract, and a successful bidder shall furnish a performance bond in the full amount of the respective contract to the satisfaction of city council.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that the public hearing for the twenty twenty-three budget shall be held on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, at nine forty-five AM in City Council Chambers, second floor, one Fourth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen oh thirteen. Further, that the final action on the twenty twenty-three budget ordinance will be taken at a regular meeting of council to be held on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, at ten AM in Council Chambers, second floor, one Fourth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Further, that the city clerk is hereby authorized to publish a notice of the date, time, and place of the fore-said hearing. Further, that a copy of said proposed budget may be obtained from the city clerk's office at a fee of ten dollars.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve the following is the list of the legal holidays for the city of Chester for the year twenty twenty-three. New Year's Day, Monday, January second, will be observed. Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Monday, January sixteenth. President's Day, Monday, February twentieth. Good Friday, Friday, April seventh. Primary Election Day, Tuesday, May sixteenth. Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty-ninth. Flag Day, Wednesday, June fourteenth. Juneteenth, Monday, June nineteenth. Independence Day, Tuesday, July fourth. Labor Day, Monday, September fourth. Indigenous Peoples' Day, Monday, October ninth. General Election Day, Tuesday, November seventh. Veterans Day, Friday, November tenth. Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November twenty-third, and Friday, November twenty-fourth. And Christmas Day, Monday, December twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that the City Council of the City of Chester will be holding deliberative-only meetings in City Council Chambers, one Fourth Street, second floor, Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen oh thirteen, at two o'clock PM prevailing local time on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-three. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-nineteen restrictions and or state mandates. January ninth and the twenty-third. February sixth and the twenty-first. March sixth and the twentieth. April tenth and the twenty-fourth. May eighth and the twenty-second. June twelfth and the twenty-sixth. July tenth and the twenty-fourth. August seventh and the twenty-first. September the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. October the tenth and the twenty-third. November the sixth and the twentieth. December the eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-sixth. Further, that the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
Second. Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester City Council will be held in City Council Chambers Municipal Building, one Fourth Street, second floor, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen, at ten o'clock AM prevailing time on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-three, except where designated by an asterisk, which meetings will be held at seven o'clock PM prevailing time. Said dates and times are subject to change due to COVID-nineteen restrictions and or state mandates. January the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. February eighth and the twenty-second. March eighth is a night meeting, twenty-second will be in the day. April twelfth and the twenty-sixth. May tenth and the twenty-fourth. June fifteenth, meeting is in the night, day meeting is on the twenty-eighth. July twelfth and the twenty-sixth. August ninth and the twenty-third. September thirteenth is a night meeting, twenty-seventh will be in the day. October the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. November eighth to twenty-second. December thirteenth is a night meeting, the twentieth and the twenty-seventh will be in the day. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that the regular meetings of the Chester Aggregated Pension Board will be held in City Council Chambers, one Fourth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen, two thirty PM prevailing local time on the following dates for the year twenty twenty-three. Said dates and times are subject to change are subject to change due to COVID-nineteen restrictions and or state mandates. January twenty-third, April twenty-fourth, July twenty-fourth, October twenty-third. Further, the city clerk is hereby directed to advertise the foregoing as required by law.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that the organization of the Chester City Council will be held on Tuesday, January third, twenty twenty-three, at ten AM, City Council Chambers, one Fourth Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen oh thirteen, for the purposes of reorganization and appointments to various positions. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise said organization meeting.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas by resolution dated July fourteenth, twenty ten, the City Council of the City of Chester authorized the dissolution of the inactive Chester Resource Recovery Authority. And whereas upon the dissolution of the Chester Resource Recovery Authority, control of all real property passed to the city of Chester. And whereas the city of Chester is the owner of several properties on the sixteen-hundred block of West Second Street. And whereas the additional lands are approved for transfer to the redevelopment authority of the city of Chester for redevelopment purposes in connection with the stadium park and redevelopment agreement as amended with Yarnell L. And LLC, Yarnell Land, excuse me, LLC. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the transfer of the nine parcels identified on the attached Exhibit A to the redevelopment authority of the city of Chester for redevelopment purposes.
So moved.
A second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Department of Accounts and Finance to refund the sum of six thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars to Mark Elliott and Michael Carbonetti, which represents the fire escrow refund for the repair of damages sustained to the property located at twenty-one twenty-two Madison Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen.
So moved.
A second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list for the period of November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, through December sixth, twenty twenty-two, attached hereto amid a part herof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
Second, are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
No.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number six, in ordinance, in ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government hereinafter set forth during the twenty twenty-three calendar year. The council of the city of Chester does ordain, section one. Therefore, the expenditures and expenses of the twenty twenty-three calendar year, the following amounts are hereby appropriated from the fund equities, revenues, and other financing sources available for the twenty twenty-three calendar year for the specific purposes hereinset forth. Section two, the general fund budget for the twenty twenty-three calendar year is hereby set at sixty-five million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight dollars, and appropriated from the following revenues as more fully detailed in the attached Exhibit A. Real estate taxes, nine million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. Taxes at five eleven, twenty-two million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Fines, one hundred thousand. Licenses and permits, two million, sixty-eight thousand. Interest, rents, and royalties, three million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand. Intergovernmental revenues, thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two, excuse me, thirteen million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight dollars. Charges for services, six million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand. Reimbursements, one million, four hundred and seventeen thousand. Other revenue, five million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, for a total of sixty-five million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight dollars. Section three, the general fund budget for the twenty twenty-three calendar year is hereby set at sixty-six million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, twenty dollars, and appropriated to the following departments as more fully detailed in the attached Exhibit A. Department of Public Affairs, twenty-one million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. Department of Accounts and Finance, twenty-five million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Department of Public Safety, eight million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Department of Public Works, Parks and Property, five million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. Operating transfers, five million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, for a total of sixty-six million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, twenty dollars. Section four, the State Liquid Fuels Tax Fund for the twenty twenty-three calendar year is hereby set at one million, two hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars, with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-three budget. Section five, the Special Revenue Fund for the twenty twenty-three calendar year is hereby set at fifty thousand, with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-three budget. Section six, the Debt Service Fund for the twenty twenty-three calendar year is hereby set at nine million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-three budget. Section seven, the DCCC Fund for the twenty twenty-three calendar year is hereby set at four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-three budget. Section eight, it doesn't have an amount, Mr. Solicitor.
There, there isn't any, uh, dollars being funded towards capital improvement in this year's budget right now. Uh, it's gonna be supported via other, uh, funding sources.
So let me say zero?
Yes.
Section eight, the Capital Improvement Fund for the twenty twenty-three calendar year is hereby set at zero dollars, with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, twenty twenty-three budget. And section nine, that any ordinances conflicting with this ordinance is being and the same is hereby revealed or so far as the same affects this ordinance. I knew that we passed bill number six on its first reading.
A second that we pass bill number six on its first reading. Are there any questions?
No questions, just a quick comment to the last thing that was read as far as the capital improvement, uh, fund. The city of Chester does have, uh, excuse me, of course, uh, capital improvement needs. Uh, but within looking at the budget and all of our other, uh, funding sources, we are looking to, uh, I guess pull, um, from those other funding sources to complete capital improvement projects here in the city of Chester in twenty twenty-three, so. Uh, that's why the general fund budget is, uh, labeled or is funded with zero dollars. Uh, we will, we will use under other sources to fund for those projects. So I admire.
No, no problem. Any other questions or comments?
You said we are making the motion to pass this on the first reading?
Yes.
Does that mean that the adjustments that we had talked about when we reviewed this are included in here?
No, there will be, uh, minor adjustments, uh, prior, prior to the final reading. And the final reading will be at the budget hearing on the twenty eighth, the twenty eighth. So there will be adjustments to these numbers that were read for the first reading.
Any further comments, question? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number seven, in ordinance, in ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, prescribing a number d- duties and compensation of the employees of the city of Chester for the year twenty twenty-three, directing payment on an annual basis, prescribing the method in times of payment and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith. I move that we pass bill number seven on its first reading.
Uh, I second that we pass bill number seven on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number.
Before you, before you go to the next bill, Madam Clerk, just to remind, uh, the residents once again, if you plan on addressing, uh, members of council, we ask that you put your name, sign your name and your address, uh, at the podium on the sheet, the sign-in sheet. Thank you. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Perfectly okay. Bill number eight, in ordinance, in ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Rule Charter, reenacting without substantial change the business privilege tax for the year twenty twenty-three as set forth in article three oh seven of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon persons, firms, companies, and corporations engaging in certain business within the city of Chester except for the amendment to subsection three oh seven point zero two A, entitled rate and basis of tax of section three oh seven point zero two, entitled tax for general revenue purposes of said there, of said business privilege tax to set the said rate of tax to two point zero mils for retail and three point zero mils for wholesale and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith. I move that we pass bill number eight on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number eight on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number nine, in ordinance, in ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Rule Charter, reenacting the earned income tax for the year twenty twenty-three as set forth in article three oh three of the codified ordinances of Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety without substantial change except for an amendment to section three oh three point zero two, entitled imposition of tax, impose a tax of two percent for twenty twenty-three for general revenue purposes on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by non-residents of the city of Chester for work done or services performed or rendered in the city of Chester and to establish the earned income tax rate at three point seventy-five percent for twenty twenty-three on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by residents of the city of Chester with one percent of the residents and non-residents earned income tax collections being designated to distress pension payments and providing for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance and imposing penalties for violation thereof. I move that we pass bill number nine on its first reading.
Uh, I second that we pass bill number nine on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number ten, in ordinance, in ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Rule Charter, reenacting without substantial change for the year twenty twenty-three, the local services tax as set forth in article three oh five of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, Pennsylvania, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon the privilege of engaging in an occupation within the corporate limits of the city of Chester at the rate of fifty-two dollars per year. I move that we pass bill number ten on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number ten on its first reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number eleven, in ordinance, in ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting a tax rate for the year twenty twenty-three on all real property at nine point four zero four one mils and fixing the library tax at point four zero one seven mils. I move that we pass bill number eleven on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number eleven on its first reading.
Are there any questions?
No question, just a comment, uh, just for the record, so everyone knows, uh, that we are not looking to impose any tax increase on, uh, real property taxes for twenty twenty-three, so. The numbers that were just read, uh, by, uh, Madam Clerk are the same, is the same mileage rate, uh, from twenty twenty-two, so. There would not be a tax increase for twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Any other comments, questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number twelve, in ordinance, in ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending subsection nine two five point zero two one, entitled fees of article nine twenty-five, entitled refuse collection of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, nineteen seventy-eight, as supplemented and amended by increasing the fee to two hundred and fifty dollars of subparts A one and A two and to amend subsection nine twenty-five point zero six, entitled receptacle capacity and weight to increase capacity to sixty-five gallons or one hundred pounds, whichever is the lesser amount and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith. I move that we pass bill number twelve on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number twelve on its first reading.
Are there any questions?
Uh, no questions, comment, uh, so. Many of you may have seen a difference and change in your, um, weekly pickups from our c- trash hauler and vendor, uh, JP Mascaro. Um, we negotiated, uh, or amended the contract, the current agreement that we have with JP for them to pick up bulk trash now in the city of Chester from the households once a week. Uh, the city where, has been taking on that cost, along with other costs as well, and, 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 and costs that have, has been increasing over the years for, uh, trash pickups and bulk trash dumping as well, uh, that our public works team does, so. Uh, that we are looking to increase the rubbish fee from two hundred and twenty-five dollars to, to two hundred and fifty dollars, which is a twenty-five dollar difference uh, per, uh, that's been considered for twenty twenty-three. Uh, quite frankly, uh, it is not what the, where the city, where the increase really should be. Uh, the city is still, uh, a- at a, in the red or at a loss when paying for, uh, its trash hauler and, uh, for the bulk trash of, uh, dumping at Delaware County Siloise. Uh, but we are, we have to unfortunately increase this fee to save some of the blow from the city of Chester, so. It is, uh, been increased, or we're looking to increase it, uh, twenty-five dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Before we go into, uh, comments from public comments, uh, once again, if you want to make public comments, we ask that you would sign your name and your address so that if you're going to address council, we may hear from you. Um, also wanted to say that, uh, on last Monday at three fifteen, we held an executive session, uh, to discuss our budget.
All right. Ms. Smith.
Good evening. Uh, I'm just, I'm, I'm here to ask just for clarity for the two hundred and fifty dollars, um, rubbish increase.
Fifty.
Um.
Twenty-five dollar increase.
Well, I mean, the, the total being two hundred and fifty dollars. Right? The total is going to be two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
Now, you said bulk, bulk waste, does, how do, how does that fit in? Bulk waste will be picked up when? I mean, you don't have to go through the procedures, a call here, come and get my trash at a particular time.
No, so, uh, go ahead, counsel.
It's on your regular trash day. Like, if your trash day is on Friday, then your, um, what you can do is put out one piece of bulk per week.
All right. So no, no need in having to call anymore.
Right.
For bulk, okay. Okay, as I was coming over here tonight, I, I noticed on Flower Street that it seems to be a parking lot for RVs and, um, tractor trailers. And when I'm coming out of that Sixth Street, i- it's hard to see around those corners, and you know, Flower Street gets a lot of traffic. So, um, is that a designated parking spot for big hauler trucks and RVs and campers on that, on that strip of, um, on that particular street?
No, it's not. Um, we've had our police officers go down and address that from time to time. Uh, some of the residents have, have, uh, questioned, posed the questions of why those vehicles are there. Um, they just started back appearing again, so we'll have to address it again.
Okay, so I'm like, so if you want to send an officer there tonight, on my way over here, I notice all those, uh, trucks decided to come and park it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Dr. Fontaine.
Merry Christmas there.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. We'll see it next week. Good evening.
Evening.
I do know our front it says Chester, Pennsylvania, but I would like to acknowledge that this is the land of the Okeahaken and the Len- Lenny Lenape. Just like acknowledgement, but the, the question that I had for everyone tonight is, um.
Before you go in. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yes, sir.
Florence Streets, Florence.
Florence Drive. Lamoken Village Projects.
Got you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I saw the report, uh, the other day from Mr. Kapoor and Mr. Dowry. Um, I'd like to know, um, regarding, um, next week and everything. Um, I'd like for Mr. Dowry and Mr. Kapoor to be granted, uh, subpoena power just so we can kind of get to the bottom of what's really going on in terms of finances and, um, the bankruptcy. I'd like to know who would we, uh, direct that to, um, in terms of addressing letters.
I would suggest that you obtain legal counsel. That's a legal matter. And that's your prerogative to do whatever you see fit.
My question is, uh, who exactly would that go to? Um, once legal counsel is obtained, if we want to make those, um, notes and everything made, would that go to the office of the receiver? Would that go to Harrisburg? Would that go to the county? Uh, so what I'm looking for is some direction, um, of, you know, who we would be able to direct those inquiries to?
I mean, it, it could be any one of those that you suggested. I, I really can't give you legal advice on that.
Not asking for legal advice, I'm just asking for direction, Mr. Shus.
It could be the Commonwealth Court, it could be the receiver, it could be the city, it could be the county, it could be D C E D, any number of those agencies.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I do apologize, I did not say three minutes, please. Um, Mr. Jones.
Uh, good evening, counsel, mayor.
Evening.
I got four questions, so I'll just. By you all, the twenty nineteen audit, when is that going to be completed and, and why can't we be more caught up on audits? Um, have you put safeguards in place so that you can prevent further hacks? The Widener Parking Agreement? And then what is, uh, council's, uh, relationship with the s- receiver? I listened to that meeting and it seems like they're only talking to Mr. Roots.
You done?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, the twenty nineteen audit, uh, was actually due to be wrapped up uh, roughly about a, a month ago at this point, or I would say three weeks ago. Uh, but because of the bankruptcy filing, um, there has to be, uh, some notations, uh, in the twenty nineteen audit about the bankruptcy, um. So, uh, that I know Solicitor and uh, other council, uh, have a upcoming meeting, I guess, this week, I believe, or.
Friday.
And I've had other discussions, uh, so that the notations in the, uh, twenty nineteen audit, uh, can include the, uh, bankruptcy filing. So it should be done any, I would say in, in the coming weeks, eh, but it should have been done in November, but because of the filing, we had that, there's no information. As far as safeguards, uh, from, from hacks, so the, the measures that we have taken thus far, uh, we've been increased, uh, I guess, our internal controls, just beginning with our banks. Uh, the bank, or the, the main bank that we use at least, uh, to make sure that we're adding additional controls uh, from the banking side and then from our side internally as well, uh, looking for additional a- approvals and other eyes that are going on as far as, um, when the, uh, wires and or transfers and things like that have been initiated and or approved, so. There has been some internal changes, uh, with the department and, uh, within a financial institution that we've done, that we use. Uh, my, myself has, has taken two, um, I guess, cyber courses and things like that, um, cyber trainings, um, and then also the, the departments, the department, individuals within the department, and accounting and finance department has also been instructed to make sure that they take the cyber courses as well. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we're looking to spend quite a bit of money on our, uh, IT system here. Very outdated, very, uh, uh, accessible to hackers to continue to come in. Almost every, almost daily, we receive emails asking for direct deposit changes and things like that. Um, and this is going to continue to happen until we, uh, strengthen our, uh, infrastructure, IT infrastructure here, so. We have quite a bit of money that we're allocating through the American Rescue Plan that hopefully, well, that hopefully will, uh, and, well, I know will improve those, those measures, but hopefully it'll, uh, reduce them, uh, entirely as well, so. Um, I hope I answered your question.
Your COO and the receiver working with you to help do that?
Yes, been working with Chief Lightner, uh, about, uh, a lot of, or all of those things, yes.
As far as the parking agreement, I'm glad you brought that up. I have it right here. Uh, this was something that was signed by the receiver and Widener University. Uh, our legal staff had no input, uh, in dealing with the disagreement. We're going over the agreement as we speak to try to find out exactly if this is enforceable or not. So we're looking at this as we speak. As far as, um, the receiver and who he is communicating with, um, Councilman Morgan and I have, uh, is it monthly? Meetings with the receiver on the MFRAC.
Bi- uh, biweekly.
Biweekly meetings with receiver. Um, uh, you know, dealing with our, um, our MFRAC meetings. And we also meet with him, uh, biweekly here in City Hall on other matters, so. Um, you might have saw it, uh, or read.
So um you might have saw it uh or read or saw or heard uh an agreement um that was uh between both the Councilman Roots and the receiver. Um we're dealing with this on a legal level right now.
Okay, so uh I know you're fighting with one hand tied behind your back. But I know everybody up there, uh they trying to make you look like you're incompetent and unprofessional. So I don't know who your 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 legal counsel is, but I would like to see you fight back. Fight back. You're better than what you're being portrayed.
Mr. Jones, and and you will uh you will see a lot of that. We, what you just witnessed uh by way of uh I guess the meeting with the receiver, there was a lot of inconsistencies in that report. We'll address them. They'll be addressed.
And
With both, with both hands.
And just for the record, um the Solicitor's Office requested participation in the MFRAC meeting and was declined permission to participate by the receiver.
Ms. Thomas, thank you, Ms. Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't um piggybacking on the increase of the rubbish increase of twenty-five dollars. Okay, you know taxpayers are paying that money, so what about the illegal dumping that's happening? And the stuff that dads had to be cleaned up. I mean, gonna, I even had to do something about the dumping. Illegal dumping, cuz over in my neighborhood, they clean it up. And right this minute, it's clean, but by next week, I'm sure it'll be trash again. I mean, we need to get some cameras or something or to see who's dump doing this dumping. Because taxpayers are paying their share, but then the illegal dumping is being picked up by the city and the taxpayers.
Ms. Thomas, we've we've got, we have cameras in some areas. In some areas, they have cameras, uh businesses have cameras. And we, our law enforcement personnel have asked to look at those cameras. And they refuse to uh to allow them access to those cameras. In some instances, some folks see them.
See them dumping.
And they don't say anything. Councilwoman West caught some illegal dumpers and approached them what she should not do. Uh but um so we're we're out there trying to fight this from both ends. We hope, hopefully we will get some funding so we get some more cameras, but we're also gonna need, also we need to help other other public.
Yeah. That's what I was gonna say, Mayor. We, you know, I I live near an area on Howard Street. I was up that way today. I saw it. You know where I am. Yeah. And Howard Street is just horrendous, you know, um Mr. Alexander and our crew, they're constantly out there you know, cleaning that area out. But then you have an apartment building right there. Yeah. Where windows on the side, people live there. And then you have um houses on the other side of that street, Howard Street in that area. And I just don't understand how, when you know it's an illegal dump site, why the residents are not, you know, vigilant in terms of looking out? I don't know, because in where I live, my street, we're always looking out. Always, you know, and uh we will call if something's wrong, you know, but um
On my street, I'm at the dead end, it's the dead end and I I really can't see
Yeah.
Down the dead end unless I actually literally get out my house, go down the corner, to the end of the street and look down.
Area is different, but there are a lot of areas where we have people living around those sites and
Well, my my initial cut question was gonna um be about the bridge on Seventh Street. I see that the heavy equipment is not there any longer.
Next week.
Okay.
Next week.
Yay. I was just hoping that really Park wouldn't get their new bridge before we got ours, because
I'm glad you said something about the bridge, Ms. uh Thomas. When you're finished, I'm gonna ask Mr. Galante to come up and give us an update on our bridges.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Yep. The, I said it three times. I said name and address. I said it three times. Mr. Galante? Mister, Mister Galante is coming right now. Mister Galante?
Out of order. We have rules of conduct. There's a time to talk.
Yeah, good evening. Um Mayor Kirkland requested that I do a brief update on the status of the bridges uh in the city of Chester. I'm gonna focus on the ones that um need repairs or are actively going under repair. The first one, of course, is Seventh Street Bridge. That's a county-owned bridge. Uh that project is scheduled to be, uh the bridge is scheduled to be open on December twentieth. Uh there's a ribbon cutting, I believe it's at two o'clock next week. I think we said, yeah, two o'clock. Uh and then at that time, that bridge will be officially opened. And then right next to that bridge, unfortunately, when Seventh Street Bridge closed down, they closed down Sixth Street Bridge. Sixth Street Bridge, we're still looking for funding. Uh we want to get that bridge rehabbed. Uh but that's still under, uh we sent, we sent requests over to the state to the bridge bill to try to get funding for it, but that's still a bridge that we still need to get funding for. Um the other bridge of note is Lloyd Street Bridge. Uh we are in the final design stages. I know I've said final design multiple times, but that is uh we're in this, we're in the point now where we're negotiating land easements and working on getting the superstructure a hundred percent approved by PennDOT. Once that's done, then we would enter into into a construction phase, a bidding, then a construction phase. And the the funding's allocated, uh and we're just working on getting to the final um, you know, the finish line on getting that um ready for construction and and into um, you know, production for the new bridge, get the steel ready and everything. Um and then finally, uh Chester Park Bridge, that's been closed for some time. That's also another bridge where we've submitted that to Harrisburg on a bridge bill, waiting to hear back. Uh we are actively seeking funding, uh but you know, that's another bridge that we need to get repaired. Uh so the status of the bridges, we have about three, one scheduled uh for construction, one that's gonna be opened, uh two that need funding, and a majority of the bridges, like the ones over ninety-five, were repaired over the pandemic. So all those bridges are brand new and, you know, operating. So that's, that's pretty much my report.
You mentioned Lloyd Street?
I did mention Lloyd Street, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Galante.
Thank you.
We'll be there next week for the ribbon cutting. Members of um council, Councilwoman Williams?
I'm fine.
Councilman Roots?
Good evening. I've got two things. The first is I want to thank uh Mayor and Council for approving the resolution to uh allow the pool to get finished. For those of you who don't know, it was a two-phase project. This summer's phase one was basically focused on the water quality. So that was improved this summer, but the big work is going to be done in preparation for next summer. As you can see or as you may have heard, three hundred thousand dollars, nearly three hundred thousand dollars is gonna be invested in the Memorial Park Pool. The majority of that money is going to go to resurface the pool, which which hasn't been done since since it opened in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh the baby pool will be opened and most importantly, to to many people who don't swim and may use the facility throughout the year, the bathrooms and showers will be updated. What we will have at the end of this is a pool and poolhouse that's totally up to standard, so I'm I'm really excited about that. That's number one. Number two, let's talk about Roots and the receiver on Tuesday. Uh Mr. Jones brought it up. So let me just explain what happened because I've gotten some phone calls and some questions and a lot was said. So I'm just gonna kind of summarize it in three minutes. So for those of you who don't know, the receiver is taking us to court. He wants to take over the administrative duties of of the city. And I'll just be really fair, all of us up here said hell no. Now, what we're not agreeing to is how we're gonna go about it. He gave us an opportunity to to negotiate what he filed. We sat in a room, we figured something out, we presented it to him. He said hell no. At that point, I took it upon myself because there was a few things I would have liked to have seen in our agreement that wasn't in there. I agreed to sit with him. It wasn't that he called me. I agreed to, I asked to sit with him. He agreed. Basically, there's only three things that we worked out in that agreement. Number one was, well, in no particular order, but um well, no, no particular order. I gotta come up with an order, huh? Uh the first one was that he wanted total control of every decision that's made out of this building. And none of us agreed with that. What we negotiated was that we would be involved in those decisions, policies, procedures and what have you. He agreed with that, tacked on that if we don't agree between this body and the receiver, that it would go in front of a judge and he or she would have twenty-one days to make a decision on that. The second thing, which is really important to all of us, is the departments that we direct. It appears that the receiver wants to strip us of all of our responsibilities with regard to our departments. Basically, he wants to send us home on vacation. We'd still be city council members, but we wouldn't be in charge of our departments. What was negotiated with the receiver is that in lieu of running the departments as they are set up currently, we would create committees. So to give a very simple example, my department is public property and recreation. So we can imagine having two committees, one being public property, one being recreation, both chaired by a councilperson. And what really excites me about this opportunity is that this is a chance to get the community involved in these communities to help make these decisions, to help make these policies. Once they come out of the committees, it has to come to this body to agree, to vote on, and the receiver wants a piece of that as well. In addition to that, I said there was three, I'd say two point five, is the administration part. It's the staff, it's the people who work here in the building. One of the things that the receiver finds to be a problem is the fact that the five of us here, we have people that we manage. And as you can imagine, if you have five people managing our own groups of people, we all have our management styles. We all do things differently. As a result of that, the entire body of the employee, the employees in the city um may have different directions and or directives. What the receiver would like to do is roll everything up under one boss, if you will, and that would be the chief of staff. We don't have a chief of staff now, but the idea is to move our chief operating officer to chief of staff. The chief of staff is just that, the chief of the staff. So everybody would report to one person. There'd be no confusion. In my department, there's always confusion. I just have one real, real employee. He does what I direct him to do, but he also does what others direct him to do. And sometimes I don't know what those things are. I don't know how well he's accomplishing that. So it's virtually impossible for me to evaluate or, you know, give a performance review for somebody who's, you know, doing work throughout the enterprise. So that's the basis of what's gonna go on. Um that agreement between the receiver and myself was brought back to this body. We decided as a body that we don't want to accept that agreement. If we were to accept it, we wouldn't be going to court. But the fact that we don't accept it means that we're gonna go to court and let a judge decide. What I am excited about, though, is that what's going to be decided at court is not what he originally proposed, which was pretty draconian, and I think all of us uh did not want him to have full authority. So it's going to be, as I just described, versus what our uh hired attorney will be able to argue. The case starts on Monday. It's expected to go three days. And we'll see what the judge decides.
Thank you, Council. Councilwoman?
No comment.
Um just, I guess, two things uh real fast. Uh continue to check the website, check social media for open positions uh here at the city of Chester. We have a few in the finance department, uh very important positions. Every position here is an important position, but we have uh positions that we're looking to fill, so check the website, check the social medias for the ongoing search for those few positions. Uh just a point of matter, just I wanted to bring this to the table as well. Uh on Mon, oh, to, before the council meetings, we always have a deliberative where members of council are supposed to deliberate, talk, consult, bring up their questions, issues and or concerns. So what I would like to say is that if there is ever a moment that this body, this member, mayor and council has any questions, comments or concerns about whatever is being proposed on the agenda to pre, please bring that forward rather than letting your thoughts go unheard or go unanswered. Please do that. I think it'll be helpful for all of us so that we can know how to direct our community, our citizens, our our residents. Um instead of not bringing up what you have in question uh and leaving us all out to dry in the community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council. To your point, Mr. Jones, we will be doing what is called the mayor's progress report. Uh no hands will be tied behind our back. We want the community to know exactly what we've done, what we've done and what we're, what we're doing. Uh I read, I read over that report uh that was given to me and members of council. And I saw a lot in there that was simply not true, and we will address that uh early next week.
Yeah.
I was over, over that pro, the message that he had on the Zoom. And I was very upset because he made it look like we don't know anything and that we're not uh we don't, we we're not fit for the, for what they want us to do. But we have been under their leadership all this time. And we've been doing what F forty-seven has requested us to do. So they need to look at theirselves. He only been here, he he been here two years and a half. I've been here fifty-some years. I done worked all my life. And I do not appreciate him going to the courts and saying that we're not qualified. He, he, he needs to, when he goes to the court and when we go to the court, they need to be able to see everybody's resume and what we have done in life. He does not deserve to take over the city of Chester. He don't, he, did nobody vote for him? They voted for us. And I'm taking my stand for my citizens here in the city of Chester. Thank you.
You're welcome, Council.